We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we've got the pastor Jason Hoffman from the Crossroad Apostolic Church.
Your Honor, we love you tonight. We thank you for this opportunity. We pray your blessings be on not only this meeting, but on the people of our community, on our businesses. But I pray that your blessings would be upon us, that your grace and your mercy would be extended to us. We ask all this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. We're honored tonight to have some Brownies here tonight, and would like to do, if they would, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
They can't see the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before we get started, if possible, I'd like them to stand up and give their names, please, the Brownies.
I am Jamie Adams, leader of troop thirty-eleven. We are second-year Brownies. We're all third graders.
Lacy.
Carol.
Caitlin.
Amanda.
Vanessa.
Annalise.
Gabby.
And we have a Lily, but she is absent tonight. She's been fighting out of clothes.
Well, welcome. Thanks for coming. All right, the first thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Motion by Alderman Dorchenes.
We need to roll call?
Yes, we do. Okay. I mean, this is the third meeting. I thought we were pretty little had it down by now, so. Roll call, please.
Sean Bertle.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Here.
Rob Heverly.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz. John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Eight aldermen present. Okay. Now, we have the motion.
Second.
Alderman Dorchenes, second Alderman Jones. Discussion or comment? Hearing done. Roll call.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Here. Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz. John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, we've got the minutes of three meetings. It'll be the regular meeting held January twenty-second, the special city council meeting held January twenty-eighth, and the minutes of the street and sewer committee meeting held January twenty-fourth. Entertained a motion to approve those minutes. Bertle, second. By Alderman Walters. Discussion or comments? Hearing done. Roll call.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz. John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters. Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, the first item we have is a motion to allow Girl Scout Brownie Troop Number Thirty-Eleven to stand in the city olden parking lot of North Webster and West Main Cross on Saturday, February twenty-third, from nine a.m. to two p.m. to sell Girl Scout cookies.
I'd like to make that motion, and also speak to the issue and add some comments.
Motion by Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Bertle. Go ahead with your comment, Alderman Walters.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, first of all, introduce the leader of the Girl Scout Brownie Troop Thirty-Eleven, and that's Jamie Adams. And I'd like to have Ms. Adams kind of tell the council a little bit about what they're doing this year and why they're repainting this request because of some changes with the way that they sell their Girl Scouts.
Thank you. The Girl Scout cookies, of course, always annually comes around, and everyone gets really excited. They see those order forms swaying around. What is different this year is we are doing a direct sale. We, as leaders, decide what we think the girls will sell, and we order the cookies. And the moms come and pick them up, and we bang our car doors open and say, "Here they are. What would you like?" And we're knocking on doors and such. No, pre-ordering. Although some girls are pre-ordering just to keep mom from carrying them all around in the car. So it's been a really nice opportunity. My daughter and I were out this weekend, and they're just flying out of our hands. I've got moms already calling and getting more cases of cookies because they're out. We get to sell them the whole month of February, and we get to reorder every Sunday. So anyone that needs cookies and you see a Girl Scout, stop them because they'll have them the whole month. The cookie booth is something that the Girl Scouts have always done. We do, we are not allowed until the fifteenth of February to start cookie booths, which allows the girls a full two weeks to do private selling and earn their own benefits for themselves. When we hold the cookie booths, however, say we're there for four hours, and I have four of the girls come to sell cookies, we sell forty boxes. We get to divide. Each girl would get credit for those ten boxes. That is also something new this year for them, that they will get their twenty-three cents a box incentive for them. Before, it was just the traditional fifty cents a box to the troops. So that's something new for the girls this year, is they're going to get their individual benefit even through the cookie booth time. So we're glad about that, too. But we're excited. I ordered a hundred and thirty cases of cookies. It was my first order. And I have maybe nine left at my house. The girls all have them out, and most of them have gotten more. So we're really, we're hoping to make a thousand dollars this month, and they have a long laundry list of things they want to do. So we're excited about it, and we appreciate it.
Also, Your Honor, with the Girl Scouts being here tonight, the Brownie Troop being here tonight,
that by coming to this public meeting for the council, that also allows them to get another, I call them merit badges, let me call them something different.
Fun patches.
Fun patches. They will be able to get that.
Yeah, turn around here, see? This is last year's. This is how busy we are. Most of the girls, some of the ones that just have the bottom row, those are our new ones this year. So they'll be full by the end of the year, I guarantee it.
And I'd like to ask Jamie if she wants to leave a phone number for any of us that want to contact her device.
Oh, yes. My phone number is eight-two-three-two-eight-zero-four.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And I won't have peanut butter patties till Thursday. And shortbread, I think. I think we're totally filled out of those, so.
All right. Well, again, thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome. I do have a token of our appreciation here.
I would say, I would say, give it to Randy Miller, but he'd never make it up to her.
Well, I was going to bring you the new mangoes. That's the new cookie this year. It's a fruit-infused.
I've known her the longest.
The new cookie this year is a fruit-infused cookie. It's supposed to be the healthiest cookie on the market. So it's a mango sandwich cookie, and I like it. It'd be similar. I asked a few people. I said, "Would you describe it as a strawberry lemonade?" You know, at your first guess, and they agreed. And one other tidbit, them Thin Mints outsold Oreos last year, and they're only on the markets for three months. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Coontz?
Yes, sir. I'd like to commend all of you for your scouting work. I am an Eagle Scout myself, and I know the importance of what scouting does. I just ask that you girls just keep up with it, because you'll go a long way in scouting. And I just hope that the community rallies around you and helps you with your sales.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay. I'd ask Mr. Hauser of the Plan Commission to please address the council.
Thanks, girls. Thanks, ladies.
Don't let him take them all. Coffee, I'll bring you more.
For four dollars a box. Members of the board of aldermen, the, this evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard a couple of requests. One of the, the first one was a rezoning request of John and Fatty Fines, owners of, owners, and Professional Video Systems Incorporated, Jim Hanley as contract purchaser, to rezone from residential one, R-one, to residential two, R-two, a property known and addressed as seven-twelve East Estuary Street. Mr. Hanley explained to us what he was interested in doing with the property. And one of the neighbors was here saying that he liked to see something happen. He's lived across the street, the next door, he's lived for many years. And Mr. Hanley didn't have a list of neighbors who signed saying they'd like to see something done with it as well. However, we run into a couple of problems. One of them is that the state of Illinois statute specifically prohibits municipalities from rezoning in one spot, cold spots. And so this would be an R-two zoning in the midst of a whole bunch of R-one. The other thing is that he could build a new, oh, he wanted to build a duplex, as opposed to a simple family home. And the other thing is that if he had, however, a seventy-five-foot lot, he could build a duplex on it in an R-one zoning without even having to come in and see us, except to present the plans. There were a fair amount of discussion on it, a lot of questions asked. And what happened was that the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted against, or to not recommend this to you for approving.
Okay. Any, I guess I'll ask for the motion to accept the Plan Commission's recommendation not to approve this. So entertain that motion from somebody. Alderman Coontz, second.
Second, John.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Anyone? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
An extension of that, however, is that in the R-two zone, various R-two zones, there are a variety of fifty-foot properties where somebody can build a duplex. So the Planning and Zoning Commission might be so bold as to make a suggestion to the ordinance committee that they revisit the ordinance and see if a change should be made to allow the building of duplexes in R-one's properties on fifty-foot lots. The second item that we heard was a rezoning request of Professional Video Systems Incorporated, Jim Hanley as owner, to rezone from residential one, R-one, to residential two, R-two, a property known and addressed as two-oh-eight East Pleasant Street. This particular property is actually comprised of three lots, and it's currently vacant. And it's adjacent to a, how many units in the existing building? Oh, there are two six units. Two six units in the existing building? Okay, there's two buildings, right. And it happens to be, which is, which is an R-two zoning, and it happens to be across the street from an R-two zoning, which is, of course, Saint Vincent, or no, San Antonio Memorial House. And the paramount consideration, I do, there was a little discrepancy on the material that we received. The initial part said four units, but your plan is really for six units. Is that correct, sir?
Incorrect.
Thank you. The, a motion was made to approve such a thing, and it was voted for unanimously. So my recommendation to the city council is to recommend approval of the changing of the zoning from R-one to R-two on the property known and addressed as two-oh-eight East Pleasant.
Okay. Look for that motion.
I'll make that motion with comment.
Alderman Coontz, can you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Coontz.
As a state in the public hearing, I think this location is a very good location for this. It'd be a good addition to the neighborhood. I appreciate the Planning Commission looking into their planning and what you guys do, so.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Those were the only two items on our agenda, Your Honor, and nothing else was properly presented to us for consideration. So that's all we have.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Let's go to the ordinance, amending the zoning classification of certain property. This being the property of two-oh-eight East Pleasant. And so I'd look for a motion to approve that ordinance for that property. Alderman Coontz, second.
Second.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing done. Roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance implementing a liability amendatory endorsement fee for the skydiving clubs.
Your Honor, that comes out of Lake and Airport Committee. Go ahead and make that motion with comment.
Okay. You have a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Voda.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Walters for the time and focus that he gave on this particular issue, something we've probably been overlooking for several years, and he was the dutiful servant here that pursued this and got us where we needed to be. Gentlemen, if you had a chance to read through that ordinance, there's two sections that I want to point out to you before we vote on this. The first being, in the area where it says one-half of the premium of six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars has been paid, and I believe it has been paid already to the city by the parachute club, the Mid-America Sport Parachute Club, is fifty percent of what we paid last year for that premium due to the fact that they were only basically affected over the second half of the year on that. The other part I want to point out is in the future, to pay the city of Taterville for one-hundred percent of the additional coverage is described herein as a liability amendatory endorsement. Many gentlemen want to be clear on this, that what that means is they will absorb any additional costs associated with insurance through this amendment, and that can be fluctuated annually. So it's basically focused, at this time, Attorney Fines and I discussed this, as the Mid-America Sports Parachute Club. If some other organizations should come in, is they may be competing against them, then we will revisit this ordinance and possibly split the cost between the other businesses. But at this time, it looks like the city of Taterville will be covered properly, and the organization that's causing us to pursue this additional insurance will be absorbing the cost annually. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
I'd like to also, I don't think that anyone here tonight from the club, but I'd like to compliment the club on stepping up to the issue and stepping forward and providing this needed coverage.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing done. Roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance rescinding ordinance Number Thirty-five ninety-four in its entirety in the adoption of an amended.
Still move, Your Honor.
Jones, second.
Second.
Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment?
Hi, yes, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
I did compare this new one with the old one, and the changes were made at the committee chairman's request, and they have been implemented in this new ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing done. Roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay. Next, we have an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter One, Section Four A, and Title VII, Chapter One, Section Four B, addressing fees for lake lots and campsites of the city of Taterville Code.
Again, Your Honor, this coming out of Lake and Airport Committee, go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Sure.
Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments? Hearing done. Roll call.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. And I believe that brings the city attorney updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be short. The only thing I really have report on is I followed up with the Pettus Status Annexation with Tom Doyle. Tom Doyle will be meeting with his clients Wednesday morning, and he'll report to me what position they're taking. I'm hoping that they will fall into line with the rest of the Norchini properties that we annexed in most recently. But I'll report to you, Mr. Mayor, and probably you, Alderman Dorchenes, what my findings are after that, and we will decide how we, how we will proceed. I know how we will proceed, no matter which way it goes, but I'll report to you accordingly. Other than that, I really don't have anything else, gentlemen, unless you have questions regarding anything.
Questions for the city attorney, for anyone? All right, thank you very much. Mayor updates. I also have very little. You may see it on the news. It's one of the stories, at least on one of the television stations, but our new Senator Andy Manor is planning to introduce a bill. It's Senate Bill Number Six-seventy-eight. It's the Table Energy Center project again. He's going to try and introduce that. I remain optimistic, but, you know, it's obviously going to take some work. There's a huge hill we're going to have to climb to get there. But he seems to think that we've got a fighting chance at it. So we're going to definitely let him do the best he can, and maybe, you know, it'll come out better this time. Again, nothing's changed as far as the, the plan making sense. Also, I don't see anything that's changed as far as trying to convince them that the plan makes sense, but hopefully he'll be, as I said, more successful at that than people in the past have been. So let's keep our fingers crossed and hope that goes through. Again, that's really all I have. I mean, among that, in addition to that, legislators are considering lots of other legislation. And, you know, based on their past track record, that should scare all of us. That's all I've got to say. Let's move on to committee reports. Discussions and their motions to approve, adopt, and or deny, and or table, and or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee, in whole or in part, the following subject matters discussed at committee level. And we'll go to the Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. With my fellow council members and delegates, I'd like to request the Omnibus Vote Designation for those motions.
Okay. Second by Alderman Dorchenes, discussion or comment? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
And Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, a no vote prevents us using that, so Alderman Walters, just please go ahead and read through the agenda items.
All right. Make a motion to approve the request for Red Van Little League Parade to be held Saturday, April the twentieth, two thousand twelve, with a lineup from nine a.m., from nine to nine-thirty a.m. with the route, leaving St. Mary's at ten a.m., going around the square and back from Anderson Park, and approve the request for a charitable fund drive for the annual decal day at the corner of West Main Cross and West Street to be held April the twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve.
Got that as a motion. Can you have a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Heverly, discussion or comment? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Make a motion to direct the city attorney to amend the ordinance regarding signage for the farmer's market to include a third sign on the courthouse square.
Okay, can I have a second on that?
Aye.
Second by Alderman Bertle, discussion or comments? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Make a motion to approve pay request Number Four from TNT Contracting Incorporated in amount of twenty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and fifty cents for the Ward Two City Park Edition Phase Three Storm Sewer Project.
Second.
Second Alderman Heverly, discussion or comments? Hearing done. Roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Motion to direct Superintendent Wiseman to seek bids for garbage disposal, fuel, sidewalk replacement, curb replacement, and concrete.
Okay, you have a second on that one?
Aye.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Make a motion to direct Superintendent Wiseman to work with Treasure France in purchasing the new tractor truck.
Second.
Second Alderman Heverly, discussion or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Nope. Okay. Seven in favor, one against. Motion passes.
Make a motion to direct City Engineer Joe Green to perform a scope of the project's sliced cost estimate for upgrading East Main Cross from Water Street to Walnut Street in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second on that? Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Hearing done. Roll call.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchenes.
Yes.
Rob Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one.
Make a motion to allow Superintendent Wiseman to put into two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Ford F-three-fifty Super Camp four-wheel-drive truck for the sewer department at state bid price of twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, and a Ford F-three-fifty Crew Camp four-wheel-drive truck for the street department at state bid price of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Okay, second?[1555.13]
particular State Revolving Fund is strictly for sanitary sewer, storm sewers, or the TSD plant, so it can't be used for streets and curbs and gutters, and we'll have to look for additional grants out there somewhere to do that type of thing.
And I do understand that, but there's a portion that the city will have to match.
Yes.
There's a repayment schedule that comes with that.
Well, it's not, it's a loan, if we get a loan.
Right, there'll be a repayment schedule that comes with it.
That's true.
And I'm, right now, we don't have that money earmarked for that.
Correct.
We've spent all the money that we have earmarked for the sewer work, that's what I'm saying, so this will be something on top of what we've already spent with the bonding and the $10 million, so, see what I'm saying? It's, it's above and beyond what we're.
I can clarify that also for you, Alderman Burtle, we've spent a little over $9 million of that $10 million, I still have not quite $1 million left to do some more work, to finish up, and even though it appears that we're spending all the money in Ward Two, which we are. That's the bottleneck where all the separations are going, so the money we're spending in that ward will benefit most of the other areas in the entire city, and not that we're shirking our duty from the other areas, most of those are not to the extent of the project that we have in Ward Two, so we will be finding money to do some work in the other areas of the city on storm sewers and sewer separation. It's one of those unknown things under the ground that we don't think about, where, and I do agree with you, we do see the streets and we do think of those because we drive on those, but if we don't have proper infrastructure in the ground to take care of the toilets and the sewers and the wastewater and the sinks and so forth, we're going to be in a bad, bad shape. So, we have this opportunity now to try to clean these up, as the mayor said, to try to finish up most of them that we can, and then also positively zero in on additional dollars from other funds, our loans, and to develop a dedicated revenue stream with the work of the city treasurer to pay for some upgrades, which we anticipate doing on East Main Cross.
Alderman Voda.
And I realize this isn't the place for debate, and I respect that, I guess the questions I have, there's two. Number one, pursuing another loan like this, do we have a revenue source that we're going to be guaranteed the return on this investment so we can pay it? And number two, when you're reading through the minutes, Mr. Walters?
Yes.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything, but it says sewer bond money, we have a little over $1 million, and the statement there says this could be used with low-interest loans or on storm separation and other wards, which is fine. How much, how much are we going to be able to utilize out of this, and how much are we looking at borrowing to complete the project we have now, and then expand on the rest of the areas of the city? How much, how much money would we be looking at pursuing this, this loan? I'm going to support pursuing this, but I'm just wondering, how many dollars are we looking at asking for, should we get approved?
Sure. I can help you with that also, gentlemen.
I knew you could.
If you ask me questions tonight, I've got the answers. First of all, we're not going to have to borrow any money to complete the project in Ward Two, that approximately $1 million that I have left, I say that, I say I, we have left, that should be enough to take that storm sewer separation down Park Avenue, all the way to Cheney Street, and go underneath Cheney Street, off, and back behind MAI, and end up in that field behind MAI, which will take care of the stormwater problems we have in the Kent Edition, that should take care of that. And then the one that we're looking for here, it depends on if we qualify for it, and we can look for some additional revenue to do some of the smaller little sewer projects that we have in the other wards in the town. There might be $100,000 here, there might be $25,000 here, we just have to look at those at the committee level and see what the priority is. I know we have some additional work to do in Ward Three, we have some additional little small work to be done in Ward Two, I mean, in Ward Four, so my concentration with the, with the, the okay of the Street and Sewer Committee would be to spend some additional dollars that, if we get this loan in Ward Three and Ward Four, on some problems that we have there, but the actual amounts there, I can't tell you at this point. We have some preliminary numbers, but nothing in concrete. And I'm hoping that if we run into a major problem in Ward Two with that approximate $1 million that I have left, if we get this loan here, we can use some of those dollars so we don't stop right in the middle of the block and can't go any further.
Thank you. Alderman Burtle.
But that was the point I was trying to make early on, if that $1 million does, if it goes the full distance, this will be something above and beyond what we initially talked about on the $10 million bonding. That was my point I was trying to make, and I just, I didn't feel like that at the time that we made the decision to spend the $10 million originally, that we were, after that was done, that we were going to continue on with more sewer work, considering how much work that we need to do on other areas in town. When we talked about Main Cross, we talked about a lot of different projects that need to be addressed, and there's, you know, we all know there's not enough money to do it, and if we're going to borrow money to do something, we might want to take a look at some of these other projects and make sure that works out well. I'm not saying that I'm against it, I'm just saying that there's a lot of other areas that we can look at.
And, your honor, I can also speak to that issue. If you go back a number of years ago, and I did bring mine tonight, but I sure can provide you all with a copy, I think I've done it before, a number of years ago, we prioritized with little circles on a map, but the storm sewer problems were within the city, and it was never our intention when we started this, that, we did not say that the $10 million would only be spent in Ward Two, but that's where we spent it, and we didn't also say that we weren't going to pursue stormwater separation in other parts of the city to follow through with that so-called master plan, so to speak, from years ago for, for stormwater problems that we had. So, we've got a long ways to go, and that's why at one of the previous meetings sometime back, I asked the finance committee chairman, I just needed another $10 million.
Yeah.
That's all. Did you get it, boy?
I'm not sure that's the answer either.
Good, yeah, and I think that's the key thing, again, it's, you know, when money is tight, you kind of look for where the sales are, and, and the federal government and the state government has decided that they've seen a lot of municipalities in the same situation we are, the infrastructure is just crumbling, and right now, they've made money available for this, and so that's why it makes a little bit of sense, is while the sale's on, maybe that's the time to go get it, and, and so I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, I believe, oh, Alderman Lawrence.
If I heard all that Alderman Walters said, I didn't hear a thing for Ward One, and I go back to my original and repeated comments that in the beginning, before I was on the city council, there was at least Ward One input that our sewer separation should start with the east side and go west. That was not what was put together, but there was a desire to have the east side sanitary sewer and stormwater sewer improve capacity-wise immensely. There is still a very strong need for the Walmart to the Industrial Park Northeast sewer. Everybody's in favor of it, and nobody wants to find any money for it. For the moment, I'm just basically stating, we have to put a priority, as we had when I came on the council in 2009, we had a priority of the Northeast Walmart to the Industrial Park sewer. We have no Industrial Park if we don't have a sewer. We have no more sewers on the east side of town, as it's at capacity with the prison and all of the southeast and east side sewers that are in place, so that, again, don't talk about finishing odds and ends in other wards, get us something in Ward One.
Again, that's why we're going to have to have this discussion at the committee level, and we're going to have to, have to get it down. Roll call, please.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burtle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverlin?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Kuntz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, per Public Act 96-1473, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for any city resident wishing to address the council on issues that are relevant to the council. Would anyone like to address the council?